Call the roll.
Seibertson.
Here.
Piper?
Here.
Kuss?
Here.
Isim?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Gage? Flora.
Please join me in an act of pride.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. The first thing we have on tap tonight is have a resolution. We have some gentlemen here to accept it, and I'd like to read those, and we'll be approving them tonight. Resolution eighteen twenty-seven oh five, a resolution to see Ketchikan, Alaska honoring Josh Cohen and Jesse Gwynn for their outstanding achievements in sports of bocce ball at the two thousand eighteen U.S. Special Olympics National Championships. And establish effective date, whereas the Special Olympics USA Games is a premier national sports competition that showcases the power and joy of sports at the highest levels, whereas the two thousand eighteen Special Olympics USA Games were held in Seattle, Washington, beginning July one, two thousand eighteen, with the opening ceremonies, and ending July six, two thousand eighteen, with closing ceremonies, whereas the U.S. Games take place every four years, and more than four thousand athletes and coaches from all fifty states and the District of Plenty Center upon Seattle and the surrounding region, whereas Josh Cohen and Jesse Gwynn attended the Games to represent Ketchikan and other Alaska Special Olympic athletes. Both men spent years honing their skills in the sport of bocce. I hope I'm saying that right. A game that requires mathematics, science, experience in throwing, and strategy placing a howling or small ball, whereas Jesse and Josh worked hard, and determination paid off, winning them fifth place in the bocce unified double competition, and first place for Josh in the singles competition, allowing him to bring home a gold medal to this community, whereas both competitors exhibited excellent sportsmanship through their attitudes of thinking of the other competitors, as well as their fellow Special Olympic teammates back home in Ketchikan. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Council of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska as follows. One, the Council of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska is proud to recognize and honor Josh and Jesse for their hard work and achievement in fifth place in doubles, and Josh first place in singles competition, earning him a gold medal in the two thousand eighteen U.S. Special Olympics National Competition. Two, the Council of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska wishes Josh and Jesse the best in their future endeavors, and this resolution shall be effective merely upon passage, passed and approved by a duly constituted quorum of the City Council of the City of Ketchikan, the nineteenth day of July, two thousand eighteen. Gentlemen, are you here? Are you Jesse or?
I'm Josh.
Josh, make sure there's one here for Jesse.
I'm here for Jesse. He's working on the shift.
Oh, well, very good. Got one for each. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us down to communications. We have a request for a substitute motion on new business seven B one. And about it. Yeah, voucher update. And a complaint on some dumping. All right, that brings us down to persons to be heard. Eric, you want to start us off?
All right, Eric Fausel, Ketchikan, Alaska, nine 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 zero one, speaking as a citizen and electric rate payer. Mr. Amalun, Mayor Williams, council members. I'm here to educate, not negotiate. Who am I and what do I do? I only fear two things, and they aren't heights and electricity, so please bear with me if the nerves take over a little bit.
Dig it up.
Deep breaths. Please don't misconstrue my pride or confidence as being grandiose or arrogant. Those are character traits that are important in my trade. Show of hands from you, of you that were here, May two thousand eight, sitting up here. Anybody here from May two thousand eight?
Yeah.
Thank you. I've been told that back then you approved an increase in the dollar amount from five thousand to ten thousand to move me and my family up here. I have receipts for fifteen thousand, but we all know moving to or from here is very expensive. So, who am I, and more importantly, have you received a decent return on your investment? I'm husband to Carrie Fausel for twenty-two years. She spent eight years as a paraprofessional at Point Higgins Elementary. She took it upon herself to take a year from her family and go back to school. Carrie is currently an MA for Peace Health, and she's the mother to our four children. I'm father to Nate Fausel, age twenty, National Honor Society, former captain of the KI football, wrestling, and baseball teams, multiple MVPs, two-time Alaska State Wrestling Champion, All-American, former Port Security employee, temporary labor for KPU. He's currently fishing on the Urso Major in efforts to make enough money to continue his education as an engineer. I'm the father of Mackenzie Fausel, age eighteen, senior at KI, academic decathlon, Alaska State Champion, National Champion. KI pep band, jazz band, wind ensemble. She works for Sale and Orca. Mackenzie is currently in New Hampshire attending a month-long, invitation-only, science, math, and technology program. I'm the father to Bailey Fausel, age seventeen, senior at KI, a four-point-oh student, KI softball player, recent attendee of Girls State Rotary Interact Youth Advisory Committee, currently employed at Port Security. I'm the father of Tyson Fausel, age fourteen, going to be a freshman at KI, straight A student, multi-sport athlete, currently playing on the Ketchikan Little League Junior All-Star Team, Southeast Champions, and on their way to Anchorage to compete for a state title. Looking at me now, you may find it hard to believe that I once was an above-average student-athlete. I believe you sports and activities help produce productive, successful members of society. They teach you life lessons like know your job, do your job, and it's not over till it's over, so don't quit. I'm a husband, a father, a coach, and a volunteer. I'm a third-generation IBW journeyman lineman, going back to World War II, all that time being worked at electric utilities. I'm currently the line crew foreman at KPU Electric, every day trying to do the right thing and keep one of the best crews I've ever had together. So that's what your ten thousand dollars ten years ago has brought to this community. Over the past ten years, I've known lots of exceptional people that have left Ketchikan. They've all had the same thing to say when asked, what are they going to miss the most? They all say the good people. Ketchikan has changed me and taught me a lot. I'd like to use this public forum to acknowledge some of the current Ketchikan residents who've had a profound influence on me, whether or not they know it. Kate King, Matt Hamilton, Eric Collins, Peter Stanton, Joey Fama, Pete Fama, Nick Fama, Derek McGarigan, Greg Karlik, Rick Collins, Scott Smith, Dave Smith Senior, Lynn Wadley, Ed Klein, Brittany Pope, Russ Page, Rick Shaner, Tommy Craig, and Frankie Erkert. Thank you for what you do and how you do it. Now, this statement might not be true still, because we do have a national champion that was sitting right behind me, but Ketchikan's first national championship coach, in his words, never stopped learning. Thank you for your time. I'm more than willing to answer any questions you have, truthfully, and to the best of my knowledge.
Any questions for Eric?
I have one comment.
You bet.
After reading all the accolades of your kids and your wife, I think you need to pick up the pace here a little bit.
Or leaving me in the dust. Congratulations.
Yeah, that's great.
Thanks for coming. Next, we have Brian Pearson.
How's it going? My name is Brian Pierce, speaking as a citizen and electric rate payer. Ketchikan born and raised. Mr. Amalun, Mayor Williams, City Council. I'm an apprentice lineman, and it's my job to learn. Today, I'd like to teach. What is a journeyman lineman? I've heard that they can walk on water and leap tall buildings in a single bound. I found an interesting definition on Urban Dictionary. I'm gonna have to censor and paraphrase it a bit. Power lineman, smartest blankety-blanks in the world. They've done so much with so little for so long, they're qualified to do just about anything with almost nothing. They're often found to be slightly conceited and may misbehave. One might say, I could do anything. I'm a power lineman. All kidding aside, the Alaska State Department of Labor defines a power lineman as a person who performs work necessary to the assembly, installation, or erection of all electrical apparatus, devices, wires, cables, supports, insulators, conductors, ducts, and raceways when part of primary distributing systems outside of buildings, regardless of whether within property lines of any given property, including outdoor substations and electrical connections up to and including the setting of transformers and connecting of buses to them. The state issues a certificate of fitness after verification of eight thousand hours' experience, passing a written test, and paying a two hundred dollar, two hundred fifty dollar fee. This is a requirement to be a lineman in the state of Alaska. The Lineman and Cableman's Handbook states, linemen construct and maintain electric transmission and distribution facilities to deliver electrical energy to our homes, factories, and commercial establishments. They provide important skilled services to electrical industry, important because the health and welfare of the public are dependent on reliable electric service. When emergencies develop as a result of lightning, wind, or storms, linemen respond to restore service at any time of the day or night. An understanding of electrical construction and maintenance work is essential to completing the work safely, efficiently, and reliably. New equipment and the public's increased dependence on continuous electric service require that all linemen be highly skilled. The term journeyman comes from Europe, where old-world craftsmen would travel all over the land performing work, improving their skills and honing their craft. To become an IBW journeyman lineman, one must complete an eight thousand hour state indentured apprenticeship consisting of specialized training, schoolwork, and on-the-job training. All the linemen I work with here took their own unique journey since becoming IBW journeymen. All the knowledge and experience is funnelled directly to me, the apprentice. A good IBW journeyman power lineman promotes a culture of pride, craftsmanship, quality, production, safety, and accountability. They strive to preserve the trade by making the next generation lineman better than the last. I would like to ask yourself, I would like you to ask yourselves, if you have gone through everything they have gone through, been everywhere they have been, seen everything they have seen, and done everything they have done, could you be as humble as they are? My name is Brian Pierce, Ketchikan born and raised. I am proud to be an apprentice lineman. I ask you to please never stop learning. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Steve, where are they? We got two Steves?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Got a helper? That's all right.
Good evening on this beautiful day. My name is Steve McDonald, and I'll make it short, Lou, I promise.
Thank you.
Just a couple of brief comments on the eagles. My father's generation, they killed them for a buck each for their left talent. The canary owners and the fish trap owners had so much money, they lobbied Congress and had law changed so they could get rid of a lot of eagles, because they went in the traps and in the streams, and they pulled the meat off the salmon, and it cost the canary owners some money, and they were very wealthy back in the day. So, they killed them, I think it was the late forties, early fifties. When I was a kid, I was born in fifty-six, it was a big deal when you came through town and saw an eagle above the town, whatever. Now, we're blessed, we can cruise over by the canaries, drive up Water Street, sometimes you see the eagles in the trees. They put on what I call showtime. It's better than the Los Angeles Lakers were at their peak in the nineteen eighties. You go down there, see the eagles swirling around and stuff, and why are they there? It's real simple. Why are the bears out of here in Co? Very simple. They're there for the food. Now, I know there's some issues going on and things you guys are gonna discuss, but I hope that you realize that we're famous in Ketchikan on the cruise ships for the eagles. And whatever ordinance or whatever is gonna get done or doesn't get done, I hope you guys take into consideration the overreaching effects if the ordinance is maybe too strong. I'd sure hate to see anything happen to the eagles feeding at the canary. I mean, there's a hundred and fifty or more eagles sometimes downtown, and there's nobody complaining, they're in the trees all over the place. That's just, I just want you to be cognizant of what is going on, and so hopefully, nothing far-reaching becomes of this, because there's really no federal law, and there's no state law saying you can't do it. So, I think that's what they found out when they did the research, but just some common sense on what is or isn't created, please? Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Rick?
Rick Thomas, two forty-five Pecan Street. I'm here tonight to talk about the Eagle Point Center there. It's at twenty-five thirty-one Tongas. I think a lot of this has come about me feeding the eagles down there. This is not something I did lightly. I've always done my due diligence in business, one way or the other, from buying companies or property, things like that. When you guys went and bought your house, did you just take the realtor's word that, oh, everything works perfectly, and the foundation's great, the plumbing's great, it's all perfect? Well, no, you went and had your own contractor or somebody go make sure that everything was perfect and as said in the description of the property. Well, let's go back from me. I looked into this property about in two thousand sixteen. I checked local, state, and federal laws, talked to a lot of different people about that, found out it was not illegal to feed the eagles after two thousand seven. My understanding is when they went off to endangered species, unless you could feed them. Ironically, Boyd Porter was one of the gentlemen I spoke to about this, and he came up and spoke out against it, doing his job, though. I mean, Lloyd, I have the utmost respect for the guy. He's done a great job for the Fish and Wildlife Biologists here for a lot of years. Anyway, so, I did my due diligence. I made sure that I crossed my Ts, dotted my Is, you know, I went and got a loan for basically a million dollars to buy the property and do all the upgrades on this. In two thousand seventeen, I ran the tour there in August and September, and I put about six thousand people through Eagle Point. There were no complaints, everybody seemed to enjoy it. Matter of fact, I had a lot of people come back, and at least a travel agent, say, this is a wonderful addition to your tour. Okay? So, two thousand eighteen, I offered it to all my travel agents. There was nobody complained about it. So, I'm kind of gonna catch twenty-two here in a sense with what happens here regardless of what you guys do, and like Steve said, there are far-reaching things here with this. I offered it to my travel agents, because like I said, there were complaints about it. And I have about five, six thousand pre-books that are, I mean, literally looking, part of their tour is some kind of eagle show on that. So, kind of puts me in a bind in that sense. I mean, I spent all this money, and like I say one more time, I did my due diligence. I went out, made sure it was legal to do, and if you guys pass an ordinance like this, I mean, I've been doing a tourship for twenty-one years. I mean, it's a very long time. I built a tour company up from the ground up, basically, to one of the bigger independent tour companies with about, well, fifteen, twenty thousand people a year remove on that. Now, you know, I look at other birds and such in Ketchikan. We got seagulls, we got pigeons. If you ever go to McDonald's in the morning time, there's about fifty or sixty pigeons right there with all the bird seed thrown out. If you go out to Wolf Point there, there's always twenty, thirty, fifty, a hundred seagulls out there, with people every at lunch throwing their stuff out to them. You know, that's in the flight path of planes, right there by Tac One, right there on that. Are we gonna ban feeding pigeons? One might fly out in front of a car, and who, God knows what could happen. I mean, swerve up, run into a car, or a kid down by the mall? Probably not. Are we gonna outlaw feeding seagulls around the area behind Safeway or at Wolf Point? Even though, you know, they're there all the time, have a better chance of getting the flight path of planes? Probably not. The canaries, now, I'm not sure, I've heard they may not be dumping anymore, but for a lot of years, you'll see a hundred, two hundred eagles out there circling around when they do a dump. I used to work at the canaries years ago, and when they would do a dump, you'd have a hundred eagles up in the trees back there, and they'd be flying across those flight lines going out to get the food. But are we gonna stop the canaries from operating and dumping their stuff out there? Probably not. There's a lot of tours that offer eagle, I mean, feeding eagles. I can show you some wonderful YouTube clips. I don't wanna go into the exact tour companies, because at this point in the thing, but you got boxes of herring being thrown over the side for an amazing eagle show on that. A lot of the lodges, even local here in town that process fish, they may not be throwing herring out, but guts and all that. Are they gonna make that, are they gonna cite them for those kind of things? Now, after the last city council meeting, I mean, I would have loved if I could have just come up now and, you know, told my side of the story, rather than wasting taxpayers' monies. You know, four days after that, when they came up here and talked about it before to discuss an ordinance, you guys got a forum, or I had a meeting with the Assistant Chief of Police, the Chief of Police, the Assistant City Manager, and the Harbor Master concerning the feeding of eagles. Now, we had a nice talk, you know, about it, they told me their side of the story. I even brought my lawyer, just for the simple fact that I'd never seen the council act this fast on anything. I mean, it was bam, you know, four days later, and we're gonna talk about this, because we had one person, or maybe a few people, over at the point that live over in the point that are unhappy that the eagles are being fed. I was a shock. You would have thought I backed up a dump truckload of tires and lit them on fire, you know, to how quick, you know, we had a response of brevity in which this was done. Anyway, it's, I think it's gonna have a lot more far-reaching concerns, you know, we're, it's not like we're throwing thousands of herring out a day when we do this. And the people come in, at first, I got a call from those guys, and yes, we used to throw a dozen herring per tour out, and so I dropped it down to four per tour. And at the most, we have ten tours a day, so you're talking about forty herring a day being thrown out to the eagles. And I know they put up a big banner, you may have heard about this or seen it, it says, do not feed the eagles, this is not educational. Well, maybe the act of feeding eagles isn't educational, but what we're telling them why they're feeding is. We talk about the weight, the history, they meet for life, where they travel to after here, about their nests, you know? We talk a lot about the eagles, give them a lot of information, and it's kind of fun to see them come down and grab that herring and fly away on that. So, it is educational to a point. You know, I, I can see both sides of the coin here in a lot of ways, but like I say, I did my due diligence. I dotted the Is, I mean, I dotted the Cross and the Ts to set up this tour a couple of years ago, and, you know, it's just like I said, I'm kind of a catch twenty-two in the sense I offered it to my travel agents, you know, we got, you know, three hundred thousand dollars worth of people that already paid this stuff. I mean, this is something that cost me huge, if not everything, with this contract. This is the biggest contract that comes into Ketchikan by far, and it's, and I mean, they send me fifty to a hundred people a day, and like I say, that's something I offered, because like I said, in two thousand seventeen, it was okay. Nobody said a word. I didn't break the law, I made sure it was legal to do. And now, I'm caught in a situation, it's like, well, if you guys pass this, then I don't, I'll go back and tell them. Now, when I met with Joe, the Assistant Chief of Police, and I mean, Assistant City Manager, I did quit feeding the eagles for eight days now, just because I didn't want to see our resources, our police officers, down watching me, or watching my people throw a few herring out. You know, the money that was wasted in the meeting alone, I even apologized to them, because I just, you know, a thousand dollars that was right there could have been used in kids programs and getting drug dealers off the streets, not us sitting here worrying about a few birds getting fed herring on that. So, anyway, that's my concerns about this. You know, like I say, I've been here doing this twenty-one years. I built a business up, you know, and that's a little fish in the pond here compared to everybody else out there with the ships. You have the duck, you got Tac One, they're all sold on ship, making lots of money. I get the scraps that are left over, and like I say, I put myself on the line for almost a million dollars, and I don't have that million dollars that the banks owe me, and I gotta pay those mortgages back somehow. So, just kind of like Steve said, I hope you'll think about the far-reaching implications, not just for myself, my own company, but for everybody in the community this could affect on that. And I guess that's all I have to say. You guys have any questions for me?
No, thanks for coming. I think right now, you know, we don't, we struck them to look at our ordinance, we have no ordinance yet, or if that's the, you know, the council, the management wants us to reaffirm what direction we wanna go, so I just make sure you're involved with, I'm glad you finally came today and talked and, you know...
This is the first time I could talk.
Yep. And so, it's gonna be a process, it's not gonna be something overnight.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Any other questions for Rick? Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate your time.
I think it's Jessica. Miles?
Hello. I'm Jessica Miles, and I live in Forest Park, Ketchikan, Alaska, nine 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 oh one, and I'm here to talk about cruise ships dumping. So, I'm not a heavy camper. I can deal with the tourists jumping out in front of my car, trying to get across the street, and I can even deal with the jewelry stores hustling to get their next buck, but what I can't stand is the cruise ships dumping their gray water and crap into our port or anywhere near our town. And when I say crap, I literally mean feces. So, I don't know about you, but I love the beach, I love the water, but what we don't like is swimming in a seriously contaminated ocean. I harvest kelp, sea asparagus, beach greens, and my family loves to fish. Actually, we're gonna go out fishing tonight, but I decided being here was more important. We cannot allow these boats to keep dumping in our ports, with each boat creating over a hundred and forty thousand gallons of gray water a day, and dumping that in each boat, putting us, putting out as much as our usual population gives out in treated sewage a day. Our docks and channels are becoming one big cesspool of debilitating porta-potty. So, cruise ships can legally drop raw sewage, not hardly treated or anything, three nautical miles from shore. So, by those standards, these cruise ships can dump out its all head, and with the tidal waters being so crazy right there, all that stuff watches in a boswick in ten minutes, and to Buggy Beach in about twenty minutes. So, I would safely say that the decline in our salmon is directly related to when the cruise ships started coming in. And at this rate, my grandkids and heck, shoot, my kids, aren't gonna be able to have salmon. Here's a fun fact, Alaska is the only state that allows this dumping. Washington and California don't. I'm not even gonna touch on the fifteen gallons of toxic chemicals and seven thousand gallons of oily billow water each cruise ship throws in the ocean every day. But what I do want to happen is this, it needs to stop. We have to stop this before it becomes unstoppable. Our very livelihood depends on the fish in our oceans and the health of our waters. Shouldn't that matter more than making these cruise ships heavy? That's all I have.
Yeah, I just, I mean, a lot of these boats are now self-contained, where they don't even dump the stuff. They keep it on, but, and I don't even know what the facts are, I mean, a lot of the Delphies, and it used to be right out front here, whatever, and they don't do that anymore.
There's been some videos going around from yesterday and the day before of them actually dumping gray water right where they are, so, and pictures.
It'd be interesting to find out, I guess, to talk to cruise ship agency and see what the, what ships do what or what, because I know a lot of the regulations have changed, and that's why all these new ships have it self-contained.
There's a lot of the older ships that still dump.
Yeah. So, yeah, I don't know where we're at, but I know the direction has been hard for years now to change the ships before they drink the water.
Yeah, it's suffering because of it, though, so I'm hoping we can maybe get some change.
Thank you very much.
So, Carl, is that a state and federal regulation that regulates that?
It can be both. I received an email this morning from Councilmember Gage, providing me a complaint similar to what you just heard at the podium. I conferred with Port and Harbor's Director, Steve Corpron. He talked both to cruise line agencies as well as DEC, and I did lay an email chain for the council on the table this evening, and there are copies out in the hallway. Essentially, you've got both federal and state permits, and depending on the ship, depending on the vessel, they can discharge in port. They can do exactly what you heard, but it's treated into a standard that's considered acceptable either by the state or by the feds. One of the things that we're hearing more of this year, and I will confess, I don't have a good handle on it, but it has to deal with the discharge of particulate matter from the burning of the diesel fuels and the generators, and there are a number of ships that have federal permits that say that once that material... And there are a number of ships that have federal permits that say that once that material's been scrubbed, it can be discharged, and it has a lot of the same appearance as a gray water discharge might have. This is something if the council wants, you know, we can express whatever position to the state and to the federal government. But simply stated, we don't have the enforcement powers on this unless you want to look at adopting local regulations that would, you know, try to regulate it, but I'm not sure that's something that you want to do lightly. It's going to take a lot of thought and consideration.
Anybody else?
I guess what I'd like to do, Carl, is find out exactly what's happening, if that is what that is. So maybe A D C has that information, and it must be some kind of reporting from the Sea Rangers or the individuals that are on there. So we know what we're dealing with.
I can, I can make that request.
Thank you.
Dick, do you have something?
Just to comment, the gray water, as my understanding, is treated to where, I don't want to say it's okay, but it's been treated to a certain degree. The discharge of the particulate matter from the scrubbers is something I think we need to find a little bit more out about because I have a question whether that is clean enough to be put in that water. And find out more about it, so if we need to complain, maybe we can get something changed.
Ken Sifrom.
Thank you, everybody, for hearing me out here. I, I'm here to talk about the Eagle Point. The information going on in this is just absolutely crazy. I think it's, one, it's a waste of almost everybody's time is doing this over a couple of rich people that live in that condo. Those eagles were there long before that condo. What do they have up on top of that condo to stop the eagles from landing in there? Does that hurt the birds? Okay. But the things that we need to really look at is if you guys are going to pass an ordinance, look at everything that you're doing. If I get a ticket for throwing a herring to an eagle because it's litter, then we need to close down all the fish cleaning stations on all the docks. Because those people, everybody, fishermen and myself, are throwing things like that out, correct? Throwing it back out. Eagle Point or Mountain Point Boat Watch to all the docks down here. There's just a number of things that I think, I mean, the eagles up at the dump. The eagles are already used to humans. This is not making them any different. The pigeons are used to humans. The seagulls are used to humans, okay? You have, what it would take to enforce this for this city who's already hurting under budgets to try and enforce people throwing, really, I think like Rick said, forty pieces of herring out a day, that's crazy. Again, kids fishing in the river. I seen a kid yesterday. I was out fishing with him. He caught a salmon. He flayed it open. The meat wasn't good enough to even smoke, so he threw it out. He goes, "I'm going to go feed the eagles." So he went out on the riverbank and threw it to the eagles. Are we going to have to teach our kids in school that you can't do that? And this is something that we've been doing our whole lives. And I'm a Plankett native. And if you ever read the school eagle, or the story about the eagle boy, I implore you guys to read that. The migration patterns, okay? We have a short window that we're actually doing this to, and there's only a few eagles that are going to stick around, okay? And those are going to be the local eagles. The migration pattern, they're already in the rivers. We're doing it at a point where they thought, well, they're attracting all these eagles. Well, those eagles are already there anyway. They're on the rocks, they're drying their wings, they're looking for the fishing fleet that's coming in that they know they're going to get food from anyway. Same thing like the canaries. Again, they know where to go, okay? When the canaries are in full swing, they're not going to be down there waiting for us to throw herring to them, all right? They're going to go where there's far more food and easier to get than the flight patterns. That's absolutely crazy. We're bringing them out of the flight pattern, okay? Because if they're out on the point and all those beavers and planes are coming in, we're actually getting them away from there. And educating the tourists. I kid you not, these people love it. I teach them, like Rick was saying, I teach them about, again, the migration patterns all the way to Sacramento, California, where they go in the wintertime in Skagit Valley, the Fraser River Valley, the lifespans of the eagles. Again, if we educate them more, maybe people will give more money to the eagle sanctuaries and that type of stuff when they do get hurt, okay? I'm not trying to do anything to hurt these eagles by any stretch. I'm trying to help them. There are the point when all this first got brought up, the herring are done, the salmon are up in the river. So they need food. This is part of, part of the old pattern of the eagles, where they're running out of food at that point, okay? That's why they were part of their, part of their others. The eagle lifespan is twenty-five years in the wild. In captivity, it's fifty. That's because they get fed every day. So if anything, we're helping them sustain somewhat of a diet by throwing forty fish out there, okay? So those are my points. I really just, if you pass an ordinance, please think of everything and how it's going to affect the whole town. From kids all the way up to the people coming in on cruise ships and getting education. They didn't, they're not coming up here because they want to see Los Angeles type of stuff. They're coming up here to see nature, and this is a way we can show them. So I want to thank you guys for your time, and please just take everything into consideration if you guys do pass an ordinance.
Thanks, Ken. Iva Brand.
Good evening, Mayor of Councilmen. My name's Iva Brand. I'm a forty-five-year resident Ketchikan, and I'm also here to talk about the eagles. I have fed the eagles, the pigeons, I feed hummingbirds, I feed robins. If you put an ordinance in to where we can't feed the eagles just even cleaning our fish, you're going to wind up throwing that in the dumpster, and we're going to wind up having a bear problem. Because all those guts and all those remains are going to go in a dumpster. An eagle will migrate, a bear won't. Once a bear finds something edible in that trash can, he's going to patrol that trash can, and he's going to become a nuisance. I live out north of town. I'm sorry. I don't want a bear showing up on my deck in the morning wanting breakfast because somebody has thrown their fish carcasses into our dumpster. Now, I love watching the eagles. I don't even mind when people feed them. But what I hate is the bureaucratic rhetoric that's going on because some people in a building that don't even live here any year round are trying to impact the people that do. I raised my family here. I've lived here for well over forty years. And we've got some people in a building dictating when they're here for four months out of the year. I live here. I pay my taxes. I vote here. I am a resident of the State of Alaska and a resident of the City of Ketchikan. And what you're doing with the eagle thing makes no sense. It's been being done for years. And you're going to let a few people that don't even live here year-round try to change it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jay Roberts.
Howdy, folks. I'm Jay Roberts, lifelong resident of Ketchikan, born and raised on this island. I took my first breath here on this island, and I hope to take my last breath here. I speak for myself, for the locals, and for natives. I am also part native of Alaska. I'd like to speak on behalf of Rick Thomas. Rick Thomas has taken the time to educate himself on something that the natives have known for generations. The education about a species and to help a species out promotes the longevity of the species. I think to do any actions against him would actually be doing more harm in this area than any good. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Thanks for coming, Jay. Tammy.
Good evening, City Council, fellow residents. My name is Tammy Rur. I've been in Ketchikan since two thousand. I have six children here, and I have adopted two others, so that's a total of eight. I have been doing tours for over six years now, and I have to admit, this thing about feeding the eagles does have me concerned. I understand that Mr. Thomas did a lot of research before opening up Eagle Point. And I myself do toss a few herring every once in a while. You need to understand that the tourists that come here, they're not privileged to see these animals every day the way we are. We may consider them a nuisance, but for a lot of people coming up here, this is the first time they've ever seen these animals live and not on some television or on the Wi-Fi. We do tell them facts about the eagles. We also explain that, you know, we explain about the migratory patterns. We also explain the distinction between male and female. We talk about the wingspan of the various genders and all of that. We're not trying to cause problems. We are there to educate. So please take that in consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Martha Thomas.
Hi, guys. It's, my name's Martha Thomas. So, there we go. Thank you, because I can't hear it on, at home. Okay, the reason I'm here is, was regarding your July fifth meeting. Charles, this is in regards to the eagles. Charles handed out paperwork and videos, and he said that eagles were a nuisance. I don't know why he would live at a harbor that eagles come and feed on fish and guts that the commercial and sports fishermen catch. Second, Alaska Fish and Games were concerned with the conditioning of the feeding. Well, we have several canaries and fish processing facilities in the city that eagles swarm over while the fish are being processed. Isn't that conditioning of the eagle? Also stated potential aircraft strikes. I know of several airlines that are near the canaries. Then you had Meg. And the reason I'm reiterating what happened July fifth, we weren't even invited to that meeting. And if somebody's going to make a personal attack against somebody, they should actually come and have a chance to defend themselves. So Meg from the Alaska Raptor Center read from a letter from her boss. She mentions aggressiveness while the eagle is an opportunistic feeder. We only feed them for herring per tour. When the fish are plenty, they have an abundance of food. There may be a bias, only eagles show in town, so, you know, they want to have all of the revenue. And then that bring, that brings us to July ninth. Rick Thomas and myself were called to a meeting with Chief of Police Joe White, Deputy Police Eric Mattson, Senior Harbor Master Dan Berg, Assistant City Manager Lacy Simpson, and our attorney, in which they didn't tell us exactly what the meeting was about. I, in turns, went to the police department, and I have two small children, and I wanted to make sure I was not going to be arrested for something that is not illegal. So, you know, they wouldn't even tell us what the meeting was about. Then we, we learned at this meeting that you guys wanted to start, start an ordinance prohibiting feeding of the eagles and that we were subject to a three hundred dollar fine for littering on our own property. I'm going to show you this picture. This is our property before, if you want to hand it around. That was our property before. There was plenty of trees, there was plenty of needles, there was plenty of beer bottles. That's litter. You know, we cleaned it up. It's totally clean. There's no more needles. There's no more beer bottles. That's litter. So, you know, I talked to Julie Inslem, who came into our building, and you guys are more than invited in. We're independent tour operators. We're here to provide employment for plenty of these people. Well, there's a lot. Can I show you who's employed independently? Okay, right? You're going to put these people out of work, right? The cruise ship is now trying to take us over a period. So litter and refuge is, would be what we would be fined for. Litter as defined in Ketchikan Municipal Code is garbage. Refuge or rubbish as defined herein in all other waste materials which is thrown or deposited as herein prohibited tends to be offensive, noxious, or create a danger to public safety or welfare. The needles that were on our property prior to us buying it, I feel is danger to the public. I would rather see an eagle than a needle. So refuge is also, refuge is all, is defined in section nine point six eight. And this is all non-perishable solid waste except body waste, including garbage, rubbish, ashes, street cleaning, dead animals, junk vehicles, abandoned vehicles, and solid market and industry waste. So you're saying that we would be fined a three hundred dollar fine. Now, you go to any bridge or anywhere, right here on Creek Street, you have a bridge where they are feeding the eagles. Not feeding eagles, they are catching fish. And where do the fish guts go, right? So are those people subject to a three hundred dollar fine? You know, it's, it's kind of redundant. I can tell you more, and I do get nervous up here, so...
Take your time.
I can take a deep breath?
We're not scary.
You guys scared? I'm not scared. I'm a little scared. Okay, so like I said, Julie, I invited her into our building. You guys are all invited, right? We're independent tour operators. We're local people. We want our money to stay here. I pay plenty and plenty of property tax. My kids go to school. We spend our winters here. We support Walmart, Safeway, A M P. I was here years ago, and I worked for the cruise lines. Actually, I was here twenty-five years ago on a small boat. Then I ended up working for Princess or Holland America, you know, and I didn't care about anybody except me making my money and taking it with me. Now I'm a resident, and I care, and I care about the people I support, and I want them here. So let's keep going on, okay? So points to be made. Ketchikan residents have been feeding eagles for generations. I hardly believe it's necessary, practical, or wise to now pass a law prohibiting such actions based on a few complaints. If the council thinks it's necessary to pass such a law, then I think the issue should be placed on a ballot so we, the people, can vote on it. Not seven council, maybe, one, two, whatever, the council. It is common knowledge that eagle sightings is an important event for those tourists visiting our region. Why restrict this activity? As to sourdough tours, we have invested a sizable amount of capital to acquire and improve our property for access to the water and improve the tourist's chance of seeing and observing eagles. I fail to see how throwing approximately six small fish into the water four to five times a day can be defined as littering and refuge, as indicated by some members. Some further discussion regarding this matter may be warranted, but I fail to see why this rises to a level that laws must be written to control. I suspect if such a law were passed, many members of the general public, whether they be fishermen, sightseers, hatchery, or other, would frequently violate such a law. So they would all be up for citation for that three hundred dollar fine, even when we go out. And I personally have gone fishing, and I've thrown fish to the eagles. So some, some known facts. More than a hundred and twenty-eight thousand eagles were taken from territorial bounties of one to two dollars per head between nineteen seventeen and nineteen fifty-three, and much of the hunting was done near Haynes. Another fact, the highest nesting density occurred on the islands of southeast Alaska. The total population is estimated at about thirty thousand birds. Fish are main diet for the bald eagle. Eagles are opportunistic and also prey upon waterfowl, small mammals, sea urchins, and they claim crabs and carrion. We're not criminals. We're local tour operators. And I want us as a community, you guys, to help us succeed in which turn these people succeed. You know, we've, it's almost like we sold our soul to the cruise ships. And I want to live here and raise my kids here. So, any questions?
Any questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Mark Hanger. Is there a mark here? Is he back there? All right. Anybody else who wants to address the council that did not sign up tonight? Come on up.
My name's Robert Christopher. I'm a lifelong member, born and raised here. I like my temper not to get the best of me sometimes, but I've been feeding the eagles my entire life. I showed them to my family, who'd never seen an eagle in the wild, was able to do that. So they got up close pictures of them, and you never see anyone's eyes light up so bright. I never was a great fisherman. I take them out fishing, but I wasn't great at catching fish. But I could always show them the eagles and the seals, find a bear. them the eagles and the seals, find a bear. Making this ordinance, if, if this, if this goes through, would be a tragedy to this town. I support Rick and his wife and all the locals in this town. And I'm tired of seeing the cruise ships come in and people come in here from the Caribbean and other places in this, in, in the, in our, out of, out of Alaska and just take our town I used to go out to Traders Cove. And in the summertime, if you're up in Traders Cove, you got tourists on you in Traders Cove. You go up to Harriet Hunt, you got tourists up there. Places where we could get away from it all, where we could get away from somebody like that because we're downtown having a run out in front of our cars. I've had to honk my horn to save the lives of people. I know some of the tour operators and they've had to stop people from chasing after the bears out in Herring Cove, putting their lives in danger. If you don't educate these people about the wildlife in Alaska, if we don't try and do the right thing here, we've sold out as being Alaskans. It's bad enough that I've seen the entire downtown sold out to the cruise ships, which I call the cruise ship mafia. I've seen charter boat fishermen who had good jobs, making a living in this town, start to work for the cruise ships and the cruise ships took it from them, took money from them, lots of it. I hope you guys make the right decision here. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Anybody else that wants to address the council tonight that's not on the list? Come on down.
All right. Well, good evening. My name is Kaylee. I am the Ketchikan On-Site Manager for the Alaska Raptor Center. And I want to move this a little more towards education and away from the money and the fine for just a minute and maybe we can come up with a solution. So, feeding the eagles, what we talk about is it creates a habituation and aggressiveness. These are very large, very aggressive apex predators in our area. They are all, they're incredibly opportunistic. So, they will do just about anything to get what they want. I have worked, so we're going through local credentials. I have lived in Southeast Alaska since 2005. I have worked with birds of prey for the last 14 years in different settings. I am raising my daughter in Ketchikan. I am a resident. I don't come and go. This place is as important to me. And so, I would like to find a solution that makes everybody really happy. What we've seen in Sitka where tours, tour companies are feeding eagles over and over again is that these eagles anticipate the food. These people are getting out of their tour vehicles and getting literally attacked. We've had people actually talent in the arm, shoulder, and face from a wild eagle that's trying to get its food. So, it can be incredibly dangerous. So, we want to talk about not losing money, a huge lawsuit by saying, here, feed this eagle and then they get attacked. It's, it's actually a real thing. That's happened twice in Sitka. We also create an overpopulation when these eagles don't migrate is that they do become depend, dependent on our food. It's very similar to keeping a songbird feeder up all winter long. Those songbirds don't leave, they multiply, and all of a sudden, there's a mass die up of songbirds because the food that they're being provided all of a sudden disappears. Then there's the issue of feeding them in town. So, I actually in five years responded to my first electrocution in the area of where they're being fed right now. In five years, we haven't had an electrocution in that area. All of a sudden, one is popping up in correlation with this summer. So, one of the possible solutions that I see is creating a safe space to do this. If we're not gonna make it illegal and we're not gonna have a fine for anybody, if we can designate a safe area that's maybe a little bit south or a little bit north out of town, an area that is against the water where food that's being thrown can land safely in the water, we're out of the way of airplanes and power lines and vehicles, and maybe even building a covered shelter where your people can stand where they're undercover. An eagle is not gonna come underneath something to harm someone. So, if you park, have a covered area, you're able to throw food into the water. People can watch, they can enjoy, they can learn, all of these things that make Southeast Alaska so awesome, but from somewhere that's safe. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that would like to address the council before we move on? Come on up, sir.
I'm gonna try. Sure. Hi, I'm Clyde Passersky. I own property at 29 Jefferson Way. First of all, I'd like to let everybody know that I live here year-round and I'm not a rich guy as declared by folks previously. Sour dough tours have created a mess. Four fish turn into 40 eagles or more. They are all over. I don't know aggressive behaviors of one bird over the other, but I wouldn't want to be anywhere close to them. My property is covered with feces. Cars are covered with feces. There are eagles where they have never been. They're in trees, they're on top of the buildings, they're, you know, defecating across the street on the larger buildings, that kind of thing. Then, of course, we create copycats. So, we've got the taxi cabs coming. We've got the mom and pop tour operators that are coming onto my property, throwing fish and this and that and the other thing. And then I've got sourdough people saying, oh, you can't be there because we've got our permit to do this and you don't. You know, it's crazy. I respect the fact that these folks want to make a living off the tourists. Great. Don't create a danger to the public. The eagles are in the flightways. The eagles are crapping all over the place. These folks are throwing more than four pieces of fish out. Perhaps they cut their four herrings into 100 pieces each. I don't know. But there's plenty of throwing going on. I also want to congratulate the city council for working so quickly. Government does work on occasion. So, again, thank you very much. This is a problem and ordinance is in order. And like everybody has said, there's a big sign out there that says Eagle Education Center. And I'm fairly certain the eagles don't need to be educated. They know how to eat. They've done it just fine for a whole lot longer than I've been around. So, the people that need to be educated is us. The wildlife just needs to stay wild and don't, doesn't need to become domesticated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to address the council before we're done? I've got a couple more. Come on up.
My name is Rod Abell. Thank you.
What's your name again?
Charles Cummings.
I'm sorry.
Who I spoke last time. I live at Cedar Point Condos. I'm a year-round resident as almost everybody in that building is. There's only one that is, resident is not. We are here year-round. We pay taxes and we live here. And I just wanted to read what the gentleman ahead of me said. This is a nuisance. The city needs to do something about it. They don't have a right to cause a problem in the neighborhood. I don't mind if something happens like the raid from the Raptor Center, you create a feed center away, but this is just ridiculous. Now, I, they did it in 2017. I did not see them feed eagles. We did not have this problem. And they had plenty of tours come through there. I doubt if they stopped feeding the eagles or that this would affect their business. So, because they do have a lot of good ratings on their service and I'm all in favor of them doing their business, just not creating a nuisance while they're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on, sir.
Yeah, my name is Matt Lorick. I live at 932 Carolina Lake Road. Let me talk about the eagles too. Excuse me, I put some notes on my phone, so I don't know how this is gonna work. I came to Ketchikan in 1994, working on a saner. Been doing that for 22 years until this summer. Lived here full-time for six years. Moved my family over here. Before that, before we lived here, I spent my winters 10 years between Thailand and the Philippines, working as a paddy dive instructor. Yes, one of the things, I read Lacy Simpson's report and one of the sentence in there really struck me. I'll, I'll read it here off. Said after consulting the Ketchikan Municipal Code, no orden, no ordinance or charter or chapter currently exists to address the feeding of eagles or wildlife. After discussion with several state and federal agencies, no state or federal laws or regulations are in place to prohibit the feeding of eagles in this way. I mean, it seems like that should have been a hint that there's been no other laws on this and I don't see why the city council would deem it appropriate to make new laws all of a sudden, even nobody else has. You know, where does it stop? Are we gonna ban bird feeders eventually? Is that gonna be the new thing? We can't have bird feeders because you're making dependency. And littering, that, that seems like a real stretch to call that littering and, you know, I'd be prepared to defend that in court and spend the money to defend that position. Littering, throwing, eating, herring. Just talk about some of my experience. I've worked on a boat this spring in May and early June at the Drive Down Ramp, helping somebody paint. I did see a lot of eagles, but I didn't see any problems going on, you know? And my experience of being a commercial fishing deckhand here is that there's always been eagles around the harbors, always been eagles around the fish plants, and it's not an unusual thing. When they're feeding them, of course, they are more concentrated. You know, this seems like a dispute between neighbors, between property owners. I just don't think it's appropriate for the city council to resolve disputes between property, property owners by creating new laws, you know? Somebody's always gonna complain, no matter what they put in that building, somebody's not gonna be happy. We could have a fish plant there, we could have, I don't, I'm not sure what it's zoned for, but it's not residential, I believe, and somebody's gonna complain no matter what. And I don't think it's appropriate for the city council to surpassing resolutions to resolve disputes. I was just reading through the minutes of the last meeting and just curious, Boyd Porter from ADF and G testified. I'm just wondering if that was his, the official position of fish and game or if that was his personal opinion? I mean, it sounded a lot like the personal opinion of someone who wants no human interaction with nature, you know? But if we follow this path, we'll never be allowed to cut another tree or catch another fish. If it is the official position of fish and game, I'm not sure if they really have any authority over eagles. You know, and the other testimony from the Alaska Raptor Center, appreciate what they do, but they're a direct competitor with this business for tourist dollars. They seem to be saying it's okay to take pictures of eagles in cages, but not eating fish in the open. I've worked as a dive instructor for about 10 years. I did that and we did feed fish sometimes. We did the feedings. It's not for everyone. It's not, you know, a real natural thing, but it's an unforgettable experience for the tourists and it's not illegal. I had to drive down there this morning to see. I didn't realize that they had stopped feeding the eagles to see. The only thing I saw was a big sign saying, don't feed the eagles. That's, that's straight up harassment. You can have freedom of speech, but you don't have the right to harass or attempt to disrupt somebody's business. I think that something needs to be done about that immediately. I think that's just blatantly harassment. I don't see why that's acceptable. I was here when the pulp mill closed down. A lot of my friends did lose jobs. The city made a decision to embrace and promote tourist industry. I think everyone agree that too much money leaves town and there are a lot of low-paying jobs for out-of-towners. Sour dough tours is a locally, excuse me, sour dough tour, sour dough tours is a locally-owned family business that I may remind you pays sales tax on every tour that they sell. The city council should be supporting local businesses such as this, not trying to pick winners and losers by creating new unprecedented laws to settle a dispute between neighbors. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to address? Come on up.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Council, my name's Norm Reilly, lifelong resident. I, this is my second season with Rick from Sour Dough Tours, who's the owner. And last year, when we weren't even feeding the eagles, there were eagles all over, over the survey point after that breakwater. And some of those eagles are a migratory bird. They come here in the spring and they'll head south when the, all the salmon are gone. And it's my own opinion, what I'm, what I've been reading from both sides, it is my own opinion, I think we've opened up Pandora's Box because you got businesses along the waterfront, right there by EC Phillips and Son, they have, and then Cedars Lodge. Those guys that bring in salmon, they clean them right there. And I have actually seen eagles right there on that galvanized rail on the waterside, sitting right there, or they're on top of that building. And what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And like Mr. Thomas stated, you know, we only throw, we were throwing, we were using five, and it's not a very big herring, it's just those little dinky things. And for comments that made about causing flight hazards, those eagles have been around long before Sour Dough Tours bought that business out there and set up shop. And the people that come here that have never, ever seen eagles before are just amazed at how big those birds are. And comment made about, you know, they've been crapping all over my building or all over the cars. Pigeons and seagulls do the same thing. So, why blame it on just the eagles? Eagles aren't the only ones that fly in that area. And good on them someday when you're, especially during the early season when tourism starts. And now the eagles are heading out to the spawning stream because that's where the salmon are now, that's where their food supply is. And to just blame it on one business, say that it's creating a problem is ludicrous because those eagles been around long before some of those people or before a survey point was even built, the condos. So, you know that yourself, Bob. You've been, you've been here all your life. You worked for the city when you worked for the sanitation department. You saw eagles all over the place. And to blame one company that were creating a problem, I think is wrong. And I think we should try to come to some kind of calmer ground. And Rick's invited you folks out there. Come out to his business, see what he's got set up. There's a lot of money in that. And when you promote, and when you promote something, and then we gotta tell his business, his businesses that he worked with that, well, sorry, but the city passed an ordinance that we can't no longer feed eagles. I think it's dumb and I think it's wrong. Those eagles been feeding in that area for a long time, long before Sour Dough Tours ever set up shop there. Thank you.
And, sir, anybody else? See, now there's no other hands. We'll move on in our regular business. Thank you very much. Well, I appreciate everybody coming. This issue is far from decided one way or the other. And the council will be dealing it over the next few meetings, I imagine, a few months. It'll take a while if you do go ahead with an ordinance to come up with that and we'll just see how, when the whole council's here, which direction they want to do or continue to do. Yes?
Can I comment? So, instead of an ordinance, why don't you have the people vote? Does, I mean, it's.
That can bring, I mean, I don't think the council is firm on anything as everybody coming here expressing their views.
I think it's better, I mean.
I don't know if the election's the. I don't know if the election's the thing, or...
Or ballots, I mean, people, people, what an ordinance, to me, is law. The law that the city provides or makes law. Um, a lot of your ordinances, I have no idea what they are, I don't know where to find it, but us people, the community should be able to vote on things that are right and wrong. Just, that's my opinion.
I imagine that the debate will continue.
There you go. Sounds good.
All right, let's get into the agenda.
So now we've spoken here tonight, and I saw, I saw Joe back there and all that. Um, I guess I was called before those guys, uh, and not threatened, but saying, "Hey, we are gonna give you guys tickets if you continue throwing herring." What is the positions of the council on this? If I throw herring tomorrow to keep my business going and, and keep my pre-books happy on my own property, are they gonna have the cops that are watching this and say, "Okay, three hundred dollar ticket, here you go?" Or is that gonna be squashed until such time where we make a, a decision on this, one way or the other?
Counsel, you wanna keep...
What's the law say?
There's no law.
There, yeah, there's no, there's nothing on the books.
What do the regulations say?
Uh, that it's legal to feed, I, I checked, like I said, local, state, and federal before I ever did this.
Where's our attorney?
They were just acting on the direction of the council, and that's why they convened this, and four days later, like I said, that you guys gave them the direction, that you wanted to have some kind of repercussions if we continued doing this. What I'd like to find out is if that's gonna be enforced. Um, like I say, I, every day I do fifty to a hundred pre-books, and I quit doing it for nine days. I gave my word to the Assistant City Manager, which is good as contract, I'm like, I'm old-school that way, but it's also definitely affected my business, um, not only explaining it to, to my, uh, pre-books, but also making sales on the dock, I mean, on that.
Carl, you want the council, everybody here, what they wanna do?
We're here at your pleasure, Mr. Mayor, we'll follow the direction.
Do you have something to add?
I think the statements that there aren't any state or federal statutes or regulations prohibiting this conduct are correct. Um, I looked into it, I asked the chief of police to double-check, uh, I had some discussions with the borough attorney about it, and there's nothing on the books that really directly applies to this situation by either of those jurisdictions. Um, there can be situations where the feeding or baiting of eagles can reach an extent that it does raise a concern, at least under federal law. Uh, I don't know if that's the case here. I'm also not clear on exactly where the, the herring is being, is being thrown, whether it's on city property or other property. Um, that's really about all I have to offer at this point, except I think that if the council does wanna regulate this activity, they're gonna be far better off in the long run to do it in a specific manner. Um, I know that a number of years ago, the city homer enacted an ordinance prohibiting intentional feeding of, I think it's eagles, crows, uh, gulls, forms of gulls, those would be the, I think that's most of what they prohibited under their ordinance, at least as I recall it.
Hey?
Is, um, I guess to answer Mr. Thomas's question, is the city then, right now, I mean, this, this enforcement issue referred, is that based on the older laws? Do you have any idea, or is that, or is that...
I know what's in the memo that was provided to council. Um, I wasn't here at the time, I can see where a literal application of it in the circumstances here, uh, could support a case. I don't think the city's done it previously, and you may ultimately have to, uh, you know, if it gets to that point, let's see whatever particular judge or magistrate views it as this breathing littering.
Julie, then Bob and Dick.
I don't think our police department should be watching them for, to pinch them on litter laws, because if that were the case, we would have them go downtown and, and watch the jewelry store owners for flicking their cigarette butts, so I don't think...
I don't, I don't supervise the police department, I know they've got an awful lot to do, though.
Was there a, not, I mean, is there a direction from the council, you guys wanna hold and keep doing this or not, until we get some ordinance?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't think that we have, um, the regulations in place or the will to, to be the regulator of, of this particular incident, and as Mr. Thomas said, can I throw the fish on my own property? Well, I would say, yeah, you probably could do that in regards to that. Uh, but this time, I don't see where we're the regulator of what he does down there. Now, the comment was made that there may be dispute between new property owners, and that may be the avenue they have to take, but I don't think it's the city's place right now.
Dick?
Oh, I'm confused, is the fish being thrown on Mr. Thomas's property or on city tideland property?
My understanding of the activity, the fish is thrown from his property, but it goes into the city tidelands, into the harbor.
And that was explained...
That's the issue.
And that was explained to me during the meeting with Assistant Chief Police Harbor Master, uh, Assistant City Manager. Um, sometimes, that happens. I have a pretty good arm, I started out there a little far. Um, anyway, I'm trying to minimize this as best I can. I didn't come in here to do any Machiavellian crazy stuff down there, go, "Yee-haw, let's piss off everybody." You know, there is one section of my property that's very much ours, I mean, without a doubt. I did a fill last year, um...
Does that represent your corner of that property in the water?
Um, yes and no, we don't have the right plat on here right now.
Okay.
I did fill in this area to a point, about twenty feet out, into the water here, uh, did fill right over there, if anyone can see that. But I still have all that property right there, which is, I'll have to look into it, I don't have a plat with me, but I would say we have at least fifty, sixty feet we can throw it out, you know, over there. Something I thought about as a, a fix, or where, is a damn big bird feeder. And I, and I mean that, I, seriously, I mean, not like a traditional one, but out in front of that one property, I could put like, uh, I don't know, a box that's, you know, eight by eight, that I can hoist up the herring up here, so they're not being thrown on in anybody else's property. The eagles would still get close, but not so close that they're a danger to the people. So, like I say, I'm trying to come up with alternatives, uh, some kind of, something to help out here, 'cause I, I'm not here to mess with my neighbors down here, that's the last thing I wanted, uh, on this. Um, and I'm sure that's the last thing they want to, is to have to deal with this, and I, you know, like I say, I put a lot of time and energy into it, I'm trying to do the best I can, but literally, like I said, a big kinda bird feeder, so there's never a doubt where those herring get to, it's not gonna be on city land, tidelands, it'd be just right in one spot, and they come down one at a time, throwing the herring up into that thing.
Okay, is there four hands to keep, um, to enforce...
You're gonna let him talk to this, I'd like to talk to him.
So, I really appreciate it. If this was not cool nine or ten days ago, it shouldn't be cool tomorrow. Please don't act like fish flopping on the dock. You made a decision, stick with it, let these folks figure out what they're gonna do in the long term, but you felt strongly enough about it nine or ten days ago, whenever it was, to get all these folks involved, which I truly appreciate. He's creating a danger to, and a nuisance, and so please, just stick with what you're saying. Don't, don't be the fish, okay? Um, allow this to take its course, create an ordinance which gives thoughtful consideration to all sides, and allow it to go forward. Thank you.
And that's up to the council. And I understand your, I mean, you know, my biggest problem with this is property damage, 'cause, um, I live up at Dudley Field, and I lived up there for a long time, and then a few years ago, they started a concession stand, which brought in a whole new family of ravens, who all like to dive bomb off my roof, and the damage on my roof was, um, greatly and profusely, um, increased by just having ravens up there, even though there were some eagles running around, they never sat on my house. So I understand how damage can be a big issue, and so I have a concern about how this affects other property owners, and I think there's a lot of issues that were brought up tonight, and then, um, last time we had a meeting, and we need to address this. I don't think the council should address this, that we have members of our community that come to us and want us to, um, just, um, address this. And so we're gonna address this, and I don't know how fast it's gonna be able to get, um, anything done, but we will address it and work on it to try to come up with something that works for everybody, and, um, as best we can. All I want tonight to know is the council continuing, wanting to continue to enforce it or not, so we can move on. Is there four hands to continue to enforce it or not? That was the question.
My question is, is there something there we can enforce?
Right, if there's not, if there's a lot of...
If there is, we enforce it, if there's not, then we don't.
It's in the report, we can enforce it.
Mr. Mayor, in the absence of the city attorney, we posed the question to the acting attorney, and we were advised that the best bet, given what's in the code, would be to apply the uh, ordinances that pertain to littering. I can't tell you whether or not those will be sustained, if we do citations, our judge is gonna rule on that. It's, it would be uncharted in these circumstances. What was said tonight is essentially correct. The code doesn't have any restrictions relative to feeding of wildlife. Regardless of what you tell us to do in the interim, we're gonna need direction whether or not you want us to bring forward an ordinance that would restrict feeding of wildlife. That, that seems to be what the issue is.
Well, I think we have to have the ordinance on agenda, and we need to talk about some of the different issues here, or areas where we could find someplace else. A lot of issues have come up, I'm still wanting to have some kind of ordinance, I worry about property damage, since I experienced it profusely, and just with ravens, so I can understand how some of the property owners in that area might feel. Um, so unless the council comes up and would bring this before us, and they wanna just give dish it, um, right now, where, I want us some direction on where we're going. Do you guys wanna take, um, continue and see how the court does it, or not? I mean, it's a waste of time, if we, I mean, it's just a, a decision, what do you guys wanna do? Do you wanna continue enforcing or not? And see how it goes or not? I just need four hands to enforce it or not.
Well, my question still is, what is it we're forcing? I mean...
The littering.
We're forcing the littering laws. We're forcing a littering law, and he's littering his own property, or he's littering our property?
It'd be our property.
It would be our tidelands, that would be my recommendation, that that would be, if we...
All we have control of the property.
If we should observe that.
So if the fish hits our tidelands, then he'd get a ticket, but if he keeps it on his property, he wouldn't? I'm just asking.
I'm sure it's kept on our property, that's why I wanna do the big bird feeder, it's definitely on our property.
Julie?
I don't want us to put our time into this, because it'll turn into a harassment issue, 'cause we're not gonna have police officers, like I said, watching the folks downtown. We get complaints about that all the time, cigarette butts everywhere. So if they're gonna watch the eagle feeding, then they're gonna be watching the cigarette butts too. And we're not gonna, I don't wanna see our police officers doing that.
Hey, do you guys wanna give some direction? Right now, we're enforcing, you guys don't want any enforcement, give me four hands, not reinforce.
Four hands not to enforce.
Four hands not to enforce. I got one, two, okay, we continue to enforce. Thank you, everybody.
On our property.
On our property.
If he does it on his property, then... What about my property? It's on my property?
That's not littering.
It's not littering. It's not littering as far as...
Yeah, our property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us down to consent agenda. All right, um, for consent agenda, I have, um, would like to add six A, one, the ordinance repealing the Ketchikan Municipal Code, that's the Ketchikan Community Development Corporation, getting rid of it since we don't have it. Um, I also have seven, or, um, seven A, two, budget transfer, solid waste division building design project, and number three, specific scope of work, um, on the legislative grants part of Ketchikan, that's at three, um, three million, where we just, um, we don't put it towards the...
You put it to the pinnacle.
Yeah, pinnacle. And then I have, um, seven B, one, um, the Beaver Falls Generator Unit, we're gonna do the work on that, and then, um, four, five, and six, the, um, engineering service, whoever, you haven't even do more work until we fill some positions, and, um, or is that number five? And then, um, purchase more of that GCI space for one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, so we have more internet space. Anybody have any problem with those?
Your honor?
Yeah.
Uh, in regard to seven B, one, there is a, uh, substitute motion in regards to what accounts are taken, the money's out of it.
Well, make sure it's the sub-motion. Thank you. All right, we have a motion to consent.
Your honor, I move to consent.
We have a second?
Sorry.
Moved in second, and, Madam Cook, could you read that?
I would love to.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes, regular city council meeting of July fifth, two thousand eighteen. Marijuana license renewals, rainforest cannabis, a retail store, rainforest cannabis cultivation, and the stony moose. Resolution number eighteen twenty-seven zero three, authorizing an application for municipal harbor facility grant program funding for the replacement of our Harbor North Ramp Three, and agreeing to provide for the local maintenance of such funded improvements as required. Resolution number eighteen twenty-seven oh five, honoring Josh Cohen and Jesse Glenn for their outstanding achievements in the sport of bocce ball at the two thousand eighteen U.S. Special Olympics National Championship, and that was brought forward by Councilmember Seabertson. Ordinance number eighteen eighty-three, eighteen, eighteen eighty-three, repealing subsection two point eight eight point zero one zero F of the Ketchikan Municipal Code in second reading. A budget transfer for the solid waste division building and design project, specifying a scope of work for FY two thousand nineteen designated legislative grant port of Ketchikan cruise ship birds. Budget transfers, award of contract number eighteen twenty, Beaver Falls Generator Unit Number Three, rotor and stator rewind. Budget transfer for, uh, for the two thousand eighteen telecommunications divisions engineering and architectural services account, an amendment to an agreement for the tier-three technical support and special project services with Daniel White Engineering and Associates, and a budget transfer for the purchase of additional retail internet access from GC, access service from GCI Communication Corporation through the existing IRU agreements.
Any questions, where I color roll? Color roll.
Seabertson?
Yeah.
Pfeifer?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, that proves, uh, proves far enough, and that brings us down to seventy-one, two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-two, Ketchikan Library, or Public Library Strategic Plan update, this Pat here to update us. Come on down.
Uh, good evening, uh, mayor, members of council. Uh, I'm Pat Tully, I'm, uh, director of the Ketchikan Public Library, and I'm here to report on the implementation of our strategic plan for the second quarter of two thousand eighteen. So the full report's in your packet, so I'm just gonna hit a few of the highlights. Uh, see, the first, uh, strategic goal is that Ketchikan Public Library is a welcoming, beautiful, and inviting space, and one important focus here has been on the children's community garden. The garden programs began in earnest this April, and they're continuing through the summer and into the fall. There are weekly open garden sessions for children to come and help tend the garden, and sale participants also come to help once a month. The next garden event is this Saturday, with harvest and cook treats from the garden. Uh, we're also having a sign made that acknowledges the organizations that have provided much of the funding for the garden. These organizations include the Ketchikan Community Foundation, the Friends of the Ketchikan Public Library, and the Alaska State Library. The library's second strategic goal is that Ketchikan, or, the library serves the Ketchikan community, and a lot of time this past quarter was spent on planning and then starting our summer reading programs, which are now in full swing. The teen summer reading program, organized by teens themselves through the teen advisory group, has over forty participants, and they are rocking through the decades, uh, with Friday events, so far in the nineteen sixties, the nineteen seventies, the nineteen eighties, and at the end of this month, they're gonna have a nineteen nineties trivia contest. a 1990s trivia contest. The adult summer reading program has over 170 people signed up to read with or to someone each day. The children's summer reading programs, there are two. There's one for listeners, the kids who are too young to read, and the other for young readers, has 538 kids signed up at last count, which is well over our number for last year of 502. So the third strategic goal is that the library engages with the community. And one thing that we've been doing, Rebecca Fama, who is our outreach librarian, held a senior book discussion and film screening of Murder on the Orient Express. Afterwards, several people expressed interest in doing more of these book discussion film screenings, and so we're looking into scheduling some of these later in the year. The fourth strategic goal is that the library is a growing vibrant organization. And one thing that we've done this past quarter is, on June 7, we celebrated milestones for two of our staff members. Office Manager Kelly Johnson has been with the library for 26 years, and Tammy Dinsmore has been with the library for 20 years. So as I said before, these are just a few of the many things that the library has done in this past quarter. We have a link to the full report, not only in your packet, but also on the library's website in the About Us section. And finally, I'd like to thank the council and everybody at the city for your support of the library and the work that we do with the people of Ketchikan. The help we receive from city departments, other local organizations, and individuals is invaluable, and we really appreciate it. Any questions?
Any questions for Pat? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us down to 7B2, authorizing submission of owner's dam safety program staffing route to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council director general manager to prepare and submit a federal agency regulatory commission and owner's dam safety plan staffing review as determined appropriate by the city council.
Carl, what are our three options again?
Just remember, the three options that the staff came up with was to prepare a plan based on the current staffing within the electric division and submit that to FERC. As I noted in my cover report, given FERC's previous expression of concerns, I don't think that approach would necessarily be well received. The second is to endorse a plan developed by the electric division manager and the senior project engineer, calling for two additional power plant mechanics, and bringing back the apprentice program, coupled with some succession planning, but not commit to that pending your review of the 2019 budget. Or the third option would be to move forward with the addition of the two mechanics immediately and see how that's basically received by FERC and go from there. If the council has other alternatives that wants to bring forward, we're open to that. But I think the bottom line is FERC has expressed some concern that we are not adequately staffed to do the maintenance associated with the city's system. And we did commit to submitting the staffing plan by the end of the year, and I do want to get something to the, to FERC.
Counsel?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
First of all, I think that there is more work than we probably have, some staff to do, and we're falling behind in a lot of this stuff. But I guess I disagree with the fact that we have to hire new powerhouse mechanics. When you look at the list that was presented and the tasks that are ordered, and even the project task here, such as investigate drainage leaks, grout leaks, build stairways, improve stream gauge access, install weers, I think the problem we have is they lump all of it together under a powerhouse mechanic. In reality, this is general labor work. And what's happening is we're taking our mechanics out of the powerhouse and sending them out to do general labor work. I think that there's a potential here to hire general labors to do the work and allow our mechanics to do what they're trained to do. You know, they say they have six and a half powerhouse mechanics or whatever it is, and in reality, two of those individuals are at the Fair Street Shop working on vehicles, and they're not powerhouse mechanics. I think we need to review those situations and call them what they are, and maybe redirect some of this work. In the past, you know, we had maintenance guys, Mike Smith, Don Haas, those kind of guys that did this work. One of the things they hung their hat on was inspection of the pen stocks. Well, from my knowledge, we don't do internal inspection of our pen stocks when we don't dewater. And if we were to have to do that, we would probably hire an outside contractor to use an ROV to do internal inspections. So what we're talking about is walking the pipeline, looking for loose boats, looking for rust, looking for damage if there was a slide or something, looking at the foundations to see if there's cracks. And that stuff, that can be done by labors, not necessarily need for a powerhouse mechanic to come out of the shop to do it. Maybe we have to add another job description because we're going to provide a little bit more responsibility to that person. But I guess that's, that's what my concern is. This is, we're labeling all the powerhouse mechanics. And if you look at our budget documents this year, when we looked at them, a powerhouse mechanic's about $81,000 a year. And when you go down to a general laborer, they're about $41,000. We can hire twice as much labor for the same money.
Carl, response?
Yeah, I have a couple of points, Mr. Mayor. I would tell you, earlier this year, I had the opportunity to go out to Whitman with the electric division manager, and there were issues out there that mechanics in the garage were addressing. Zach was out there doing the work. The other thing you've got to remember is that these mechanics aren't just dedicated to the hydroelectric projects. When we do extended diesel runs, those guys are at Bailey maintaining those diesel generators and are not available to do the work. I don't disagree with the characterization of some of the work that Councilmember Seabertson is saying, but if we submit a response to FERC that says we're just basically going to go with labors, my personal assessment is it's not going to be well received. And I don't know if Andy or Jenny, if you want to elaborate on anything I've said.
I can try to elaborate, and those are very good points. And actually, maybe, maybe a mix is the, is the right answer, one of each, to satisfy what you, what you cited there. But what we, what we experience is the powerhouse mechanics, especially pen stocks, require some welling. We had a pen stock leak, a valve leak, and at the time, we were in a full-run diesel support diesel campaign, and it was very difficult for us to get people out in the field. We were able to free up Zach. We also borrowed some help from, from the city side, and we tore apart flanges, pulled out a bad, a bad gasket, welded some new flanges on. That, that took some time. It would be nice to have our own internal people do that work and not have to borrow. So that's just one type. The, it's interesting, all the things you say there, the powerhouse mechanics we have are quite a different, say, assembly of different skills. We have one fellow who's very, very good with heavy machinery. So here this week, we re-sculpted the tail race at Whitman. One of the things we're blamed on, one of the things I took a ding, I'm in violation of the, of the license, terrible thing, because I'm trapping some salmon in it. And so we restacked the lot, the rocks in that tail race. So at the same time, we mentioned an abutment had to do some creative forming to, to seal up an abutment. At the same time, we had a, a leak in the deep water intake at Whitman, so we had those three jobs going. Just so happens, due to an outage that we had Sunday, there was some request from, from SEPA if we could also support their, their testing activity with a diesel run. And so here we start running out of manpower again. We tried to, to push that off until later in the evening. It turned out to our benefit that it was rescheduled the following morning, and we could do it all. But these are the kind of things. So I don't know that just two labors would do it. I do see that you have a good point, that some of the stuff is, is labor-related, certainly repairing log booms, things like that. But there's the, the other piece that does require the skill level of, of the mechanics, and some of that is specialized welding. So I don't know if that answers your question.
If I could just reiterate one thing that was in the cover report as well, we, we can submit whatever the council directs us to submit, but, but recognize in the end that if FERC doesn't like what we've submitted, they, they can dictate to us the, the level of staff. So we'll, we'll do as the council determines appropriate.
Well, yeah.
You go.
I don't discredit the work that Zach and other people do. I get that. I'm just saying that, as I look at this report and, and the amount of stuff that's here, I agree that we need to have qualified people welding it, but the majority of the stuff is the inspection. You're walking the lines and look at it. And, and I've walked on those lines. I know, you know. And then a lot of this stuff, the, the road maintenance, the different things like that, if we hire the right skill sets, and like I said, we may have to change some of the classification a bit, but I think a lot of this outside work, we're taking those guys that should be working on the diesels out of the plants and, and putting them to a place where, I mean, I wouldn't hire a lineman or electrician to mow my lawn. I think that's not a good use of my resources. But I, I think that's some of the stuff that goes on here, and I don't know how to get around that. Maybe we need, and I agree with you, Andy, it might be a mix. I'm not, I'm not against that, but to classify everybody as a powerhouse mechanic and have them, I mean, I, doing this various underwork that has to be done.
I agree with you there, and we do have classification for labors, and they do do the brushing. So as far as the lawn cutting, that is, that is...
Yeah. I mean, a lot of the other stuff is, is the same way. I think, I think the, the inspection with a Doppler, I mean, I've used Dopplers when at the landfill to test on our equipment, and, and that's not something that I don't think you could forcibly say that a laborer couldn't do.
Certainly. The other issue is, is you have this manpower, you have that extra, extra person. There's a time when you want them to wrench on the, on the diesels. So our diesels are aged. You got to see those. This past spring, we wound up with three heads, couple others on the other edges. We had parts to do that. So there's times when we need a crew to take care of that. If you have a, a more universal mix, we have that as well, rather than be short on, on that support also. Again, the problem for us came when we have these diesel campaigns, and now you take your, your, your maintenance group and you move them on to shift, and now we don't have the people for the, to handle the stuff out in the field. And so we have to defer that. Now, in our case, we don't defer it very much. A couple of days, we're looking for certain windows, and, and we try to get at it. And again, in the case where we were really behind the eight ball with, with a leak, we didn't want to lose the water there out of, out of Whitman, we were going to borrow some people out of, out of the city side.
Yeah.
Helped us through a mine, but nevertheless, that's...
Yeah, I appreciate that. But, but then again, you know, in the report, and I read it in pretty much detail, after the, and there was a letter in there, I think, from Mr. Shield in regards to operators and $24 runs and all this kind of stuff. And in the report, it said with the tie, intertie, and with Whitman coming on, the diesel runs are by far less. And so that doesn't happen as often, maybe. And I know that we're going to have spurts where that will happen for various reasons. I'm just wondering if there's a, a different way to skin this cat in order to make it, to benefit of the community in regards to the cost of running a utility, if, you know, if there's a better, better way to do that. I don't know. I just thought I'd throw it out there because it just seems like we're doing an awful lot of general labor work with highly skilled people.
Carl, any?
Go ahead, Dan. I just want to make sure I understood. You, you said that rather than having two dream and power plant mechanics, you could get by with one new one in one labor position? Did I hear that correctly?
I, I entertain that, yeah. I think that was a, it's a good catch that a lot of that work is more universal towards the labor side. I, I would like to...
If that's the direction of the council, we can definitely submit that.
Any questions from any of the councilmembers? Dick?
Yeah, I would echo some of what Bob said. I, I guess I read what the position description says on your mechanics, and it talks about inspects and maintains roads, access cohorts in bridges, and maintenance and repairs on buildings, and maintenance and fleet repair for 136 vehicles. These powerhouse mechanics, if I'm got you right in question, that should be above their pay grade. I mean, yeah, that's below their pay grade, the other way around. And so I, I guess I'm questioning the need for two of your full-time, or your fully qualified powerhouse mechanics. The, the other thing is, in reading that FERC comment, it was their perception. They didn't tell us we had to do something. They, I'd have to go back and read the words, but it didn't say you will. It said it appears, or something like that. And I guess, I'm not too sure, but what, maybe what we need is a, a management review of KPU Electric that gets to the whole nine yards and see what's going on, because maybe we need, maybe we need one vehicle maintenance shop for the whole city. You said we shared services from the city people to get this job done. I don't have a problem with sharing city people at all. That's just what we'd be doing. So I think we've got a bigger issue than just saying, FERC said do this. I mean, we need to respond to them, and maybe we add somebody in the meantime. But we need to do a better job than just saying, let's jack this up by a quarter million dollars a year. Anyway, that's, also, if we've got an emergency on something, or maybe it's not an emergency, but it's routine, what's about contracting? Get the job done with contracting and catch ourselves up.
And we do a fair amount of that.
Anyway, that's just my comments. I'm not supporting two in one or whatever that was.
Judy, then Bob.
So what we're saying is that we can submit it with one in one, and if they don't accept it, they'll come back to us and dictate. Is that what you're saying?
What they did ask us to do, Councilmember Kuz, is to do the staffing review. That was a formal request that they submitted to us. And if the council wants to say, submit the current staffing model, we can do that. I just don't think that's going to be well received based on the interaction that we've had to date. You know, and there are times when we can try to rely on general government to fill in the gaps, but I will tell you, based on what we're currently carrying in vacancies down at the garage, I don't have the staff to send out to KPU right now, and I'm having a hard time filling mechanic positions.
Bob?
Yeah, I, I'm not saying that we stay as that school. I think there's enough work after the... And I guess I'd be a little bit remiss in the fact that, you know, even in the conversations, we do some things that maybe doesn't make sense. We have highly skilled people that work in our power plants, whether they're mechanics or electricians. And we have a process where we may take a powerhouse electrician that has plenty of work to do in the powerhouse, and we send them to change an outlet on the harbor. There may be a better way to do that. And it may be the fact that general government has enough buildings and facilities and stuff that the maintenance electrician needed on that side of the fence. I don't know. But I'm just saying that we need to, you know, think a little bit outside of the box and don't get so focused and see if there's moving forward. We're going to have to get more efficient after we do. Our town isn't growing, and our needs are.
So do we want to put in the mechanic and the laborer?
Sorry.
Or do you want to do one of the other three?
Did you want to?
Yeah.
This is Jenny's report. Jenny Holstrom.
I mean, I appreciate it.
Senior project engineer. My perspective was as the designated chief dam safety officer for KPU, so that was my perspective in writing that report. I think at a minimum, we would need one... I think at a minimum, we would need one mechanic, just given the, we've had a fifty percent increase in our generating units over the past several years. We're not keeping up with that like we should be. We're doing as best we can, but they are getting older, we have more facilities. So I think at least one of the positions needs to be a mechanic. It'd be nice if the other one was two, we'd lose some flexibility in how we use people, but it's true that, you know, a lot of the work is not specifically mechanic.
And I'm not trying to hamstring you here or anything else, I'm just thinking that if that outside work is being done by powerhouse mechanics, they're not in the powerhouse, right? So it's hard to staff for a full year, how many diesel runs did we have this year that went continuous for, you know? How do you staff for that one event for the full year? That's a difficult thing to do.
Do we have any consensus among the council here to send something? Or do we have a motion to defer to the next meeting? I'll take either one.
I'm moving to the one and one.
Bob likes the one and one. Anybody else like the one and one? Do we have four hands for one and one?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We didn't address the apprentice position when we were doing that. So how was that? How would, would we bring an apprentice on when we knew there was a potential retirement? Or how would, because basically on an apprenticeship, the guy builds his hours until he becomes a mechanic. If we don't have a mechanic position, what do you do with that apprentice?
I'd like to see FERC's response to the one and one, and they're going to want the opportunity to sit down with us, and I think we can raise the issue of the apprenticeship program and seek whatever their feedback's going to be and see where it goes. But I don't necessarily want to commit to the apprenticeship at this point, pending a review of the two thousand nineteen budget. We're already going to be challenged to that.
Your Honor, there's another thing in this report. I support the succession planning. I think that when we get notice that somebody's retired, it benefits us to bring somebody on early enough to get him trained before that person goes out, understanding that right now, there's four to five mechanics that a new guy can work with when he comes in. But I think that try to get that done as early as possible so that we can hit the ground running when that guy retires is probably not a bad idea.
What's interesting, you mentioned the apprentice program and also laborers. So we have a unique opportunity here, and some of the laborers, they could apprentice.
Yeah.
And so as they become familiar with the powerhouse and powerhouse mechanics, exactly, and tackle more and more of the technical end of it, so that's a possibility. That's why I was quick to accept the one and one. I don't want to leave that one on them.
And that's why I say there might be some changes in the doc descriptions to reflect that.
All right, so right now?
If I could have the flexibility to talk to Andy and Jenny, it may be more appropriate to characterize it as one mechanic, one laborer with the goal of getting that laborer into an apprenticeship program.
Yeah.
All right, so you got direction, Carl?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll close that one. That brings us down to seven B three, request to withdraw from the Swan Lake operation maintenance stream between the City of Ketchikan, DVA Ketchikan Public Utilities and other Alaska Power Agency. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move the city council authorize the general manager to petition the Southeast Alaska Power Agency, SEPA, to release the city of Ketchikan, doing business at Ketchikan Public Utilities, from its obligations under Swan Lake Hydroelectric Project's operation and maintenance agreement dated December twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-six. Said release to become effective and under such terms and conditions that are acceptable to both the city and SEPA.
Second. Move the second. Judy, want to add anything?
Well, I think that, as far as I'm concerned, at least from attending the meetings, this was all we, we always knew this was going to be the end goal. So I'm happy that we're going to at least move forward and start the, you know, conversation.
Excellent. Anybody else? Call or roll?
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Severson?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that passes five and nothing, brings us down to managers' report.
I have several.
Go ahead.
You would indulge me, and if I could ask the public works director to come up. As you're aware, we had the failure of the rock wall done by the Highliner, and we are addressing that and getting that rock wall repaired. So it was with much surprise this morning when I received a call from the public works director with another example of deteriorating infrastructure. And I just want him to brief you as to what today's events.
receiving reports of some cracking and moving at the Bar Harbor Ramp Two. So that's near the old Bar Harbor Restaurant, just next door to the Harbor Master. Public Works inspected and found the first eighteen feet of the structure has issues. This is a wood deck structure supported by four-by-twelve joists on pile caps. The second, the second picture kind of gives you a good idea of what this structure is. It's thirty-eight years old. The first set of stringers, which is about eighteen feet long, have cracked. That's shown in picture four. Immediately after discovery, we took action to reinforce the section of the deck with steel plates to keep an eight-foot-wide travel lane to the walk-down ramp. We felt this was especially important since Bar Harbor Ramp One, as Carl mentioned, at the Highliner, is now out of service. So from here, we're going to post this as a weight limit, weight-restricted structure. We're eyeing a four-ton weight limit, which is basically your pickup truck SUV-type thing these days. And we're going to maintain the steel plates until the end of the season. At the end of the season, Ports and Harbor staff is planning a substantial reconstruction of the superstructure, so that'll begin in October, after the season is over.
Excellent.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
We did include a report in the packet, just to let the council know that all the contract documents have been executed, and the Corps has signed off for T GALS to go ahead and begin installation of the rock berm within Thomas Basin. We have asked them to give us information in order that we can get some kind of notice out to the users in that harbor when that work is going to begin. There was another report in the packet about the amendment to the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-one STIP relative to breaking DOT's project for the tunnel north to Holy Creek into three separate phases. We believe that's a good approach, and unless the council directs otherwise, we're going to get a letter off to DOT concurring with that methodology. We now have tentative commitment from ESCI, who did the fire department apparatus, to give a presentation at the August sixteenth meeting. I won't be here for that, but I have seen the final draft. Chief Hoag will be putting together a comprehensive memo to go along with the report that will be transmitted to the council, and we'll try to get that as the first new business item for that meeting. And lastly, back to the subject of eagles, I understand the direction that you've given us in the interim. I don't know whether you want to defer the discussion of moving an ordinance forward to another meeting, or do you want us, direct us to take any action relative to an ordinance prohibiting feeding of wildlife? We just need whatever the council wants to do.
Let's talk about it at our next meeting with our other two members here with us.
And then the last thing I have, Mr. Mayor, is you and I had a discussion relative to the executive sessions tonight.
Oh, yes. Did you tell everybody?
No, I have not, but I can now. Given the absence of council members, floor engage, Mayor Williams and I concluded that it would probably be preferable to have a full council for the two executive sessions, and we're suggesting a special meeting next Wednesday.
Everybody available Wednesday?
We'll see. I'm flying back that day from Anchorage.
You'll make it. It's not even Friday.
I make no promises.
Okay. Thanks, Ed. Anything else, Carl?
No, that's it, Mr.
Questions for Carl? Bob and then Dick.
Carl, when would we have that report? Would we have it prior to the meeting for review?
I would go out with the packet for that meeting. So, yeah, you would have it from that meeting.
Thank you.
Dick?
Yeah, two comments, one on the STIP thing. When I read that they want to do three environmental reviews for the three sections, wouldn't it be more efficient to do one environmental review for all three of it once, within this length?
Mark, I'm going to have to defer.
You could just ask the state, that's okay. I don't think we've got an answer.
You used efficient DOT, great.
I give up. Anyway, the other one is, the other day, I kind of made a comment to Carl to your office about the wooden walkway over here by the eagle, and that thing is, the structure underneath it is bad. Now, I don't know whether that's something being fixed by the state or whether we need to look at it, but there's a water line or a sewer line kind of awfully, and then actually there's one of the beams are holding up that wooden thing that is sagging, and the nails are, you can see through them?
I will look into it, Councilmember Coos.
Okay. I don't know whether it's our problem or whether the state's going to fix it with the road. I just don't know.
I don't know, but I'll find out.
Judy? If we're going to put the eagles on the next agenda, I don't know if I misunderstood, but I thought somebody said there is an ordinance for, is a Homer? Is there any way we could have that as part of our?
I can submit that, the Homer ordinance.
Just to at least look at it if we're going to be talking.
You can do that.
Anybody else for Carl? Seeing done, that brings us to the clerk's file.
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorney's file.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Get your dental items. Mayor Council comments, Dick?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Judy?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Julie?
Nothing.
Bob?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Good.
Nothing.
Me. There's two cars over on Park Avenue by a house, they're up on the property house, and I don't know, I mean, they've been there a long time, and they look pretty bad. And I don't know if, I just can't remember if we, if they're not on the street, if we cite those or whatever. We can't do anything.
I'll talk to them.
If we can find out who it is, maybe I can talk to them, help them get rid of it. And I think that's all I have on my list. Oh, I still get Steve down at, how do you call it, Forty-Niner? He has that new coffee stand with the berth floor and the traffic. He's wondering, still wondering if he gets a crossing guard down there. He says it's been pretty dangerous with been flux of people and people running across the street, and he's still worried that somebody's going to get hit. And he's really wishing the council would get some, maybe send somebody down there when that boat is in on the berth floor to help the traffic get across there at the Percy Electric.
Yeah, nobody stops at that crosswalk. Tried crossing seven times and almost been run over, so I can attest to that. We'll look at it.
Thank you very much. All right, other new business? Seeing done, we'll have the two executive sessions on Wednesday, seven o'clock here. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So be said, shall be done. Katie, I'm going to leave this with you.
Shall be said.